Okay, welcome everyone. Just checking for HEP, looks like we're ready to go from the monitor? Good, thank you. Welcome. Today is Tuesday, October 27, 2015. This is a regular city council meeting. Welcome. We're located at the Veterans Memorial Hall and the meeting is starting at 6:00 PM or thereabouts. And we're located at 209 Sur Street. For the record, all council members, well, let's say we've got Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Heading who will be right here, Councilmember Smukler and myself are present. Councilmember Makawetzky will be hopefully joining us in November. We're looking forward to that. And so we will call the meeting to order. And if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And at this time, Christine, will you lead us in the pledge? And we have a closed session report. Mr. Panoni?
We did have a closed session with one item on the agenda, but there's no reportable action.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to announcements. And I'll start out with a couple. We have advisory board vacancies. And the deadline for those vacancies for submittal is this Friday. I'm looking at our city clerk. So we have Public Works Advisory Board, Rec and Park, Tourism Business Improvement District, our Finance Measure Q Committee, Planning Commission, and I'm looking to our city clerk, did I miss one? GPAC, yeah, we do have one for the General Plan Advisory Committee, Citizens Finance Committee, Recreation Parks. Thank you. So we, as you saw from our, for those who may have seen the joint meeting with our Tourism Business Improvement District and one of our previous joint meetings, our advisory boards are very important on how we conduct business and how we take input and are able to move things forward. So we value our advisory boards and hopefully we would get some more interested parties to apply for those positions. And the deadline for that is Friday. You could go down to City Hall. There's access on our city website as well. And in the back of the room, there's some applications. So thank you. And with that, a brief announcement on state water. So we do have a state water shutdown as, and I'm looking towards our Public Works Advisory Board. Is there any more elaboration on our state water? Excuse me, our Public Works Director, Mr. Leivich, did I say Advisory Board? I can't see it. I was right into that mode of just in that. So I'll switch gears from that. Maybe if you have anything to add briefly about our state water shutdown?
State water shutdown will commence on or about the first of November. And the state is planning on a three-week shutdown. They do have some major projects planned, so we can anticipate it going the full three weeks or perhaps a couple of days longer. We will be switching disinfection methods from chloramines to free chlorine during the shutdown. And we send out notices to all the folks that are involved in the dialysis business and those on our list that have that equipment in their homes to make sure that they know they need to make some adjustments when we switch disinfection products. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Rob. And we have one more announcement for the seismic testing. And I'm looking towards our harbor director, Eric, if you can comment on the status of our seismic testing?
Sure. And I'll start with a correction that it was not a seismic testing from the standpoint of the PG&E project that occurred, or was to occur, or was supposed to occur a couple of years ago. It was pretty much a normal bottom mapping project done by Fugro Palagros on behalf of the power plant owner Johnny G. to map the bottom around their oil intake pipes just north of the rock. This particular technology is used by commercial recreational fishing vessels all over the world. It's really not much different other than it's a lot more expensive and it produces 3D imaging using side scan sonar. The noticing process got a little sideways. It may not have been perfect, but Fugro did get the noticing out as required prior to 21 days before the project. I think mid-September is when we received it. We received notice from Fugro last Friday that the project would begin Monday. They had about a two-day window on it because of the large surf on Monday. They got about half of it done. They finished it today. Their boat is in the water at our docks, but they're pulling it out of the water tomorrow. I got noticing from the actual boat folks today that they'll be pulling it out. And we took the additional step of posting our beach access points near the rock with information of the project contact at Fugro. If folks had questions about it, I'm just putting a notice out that, you know, there's a boat, you know, close to the surf out there. And if you want more information, here's the information. So with that, it looks like it's a done deal. And they reported, the boat folks this morning, or this afternoon when I spoke to them, they reported, probably because of the large surf, the first day there was not a lot of people in the water surfing. They reported no marine mammals. Today, they reported a few more people in the water. One person they reported is waving, but I think they were waving because they saw the boat coming out and just wanted to make sure they weren't going to get run over. So that's the extent of the reporting on it.
Okay. Thanks, thanks, Eric. And then to my left, Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. I just want to report out on an event that's, I think, Mayor Irons and Councilmember Heading and Deputy City Attorney, oh, I'm sorry, Deputy City Manager Sam Taylor and City Manager Dave Buckingham and Buckingham and I attended on behalf of the city last Friday. It was an insight studio event held by the Slow Chamber of Commerce. We also saw many other folks from Morro Bay there who have slow business, or have businesses in Morro Bay, including the president-elect of the Chamber, Cindy Edwards, was also there. And we heard, the reason we went was it's a series of speakers that the Slow Chamber is bringing in for all of us to participate in. And this one's topic was inspiring innovation. So we heard from two speakers at the luncheon. One is a senior vice president in research and development for Starbucks. So it took me a while to connect the letters PSL with pumpkin spice latte. But then once I figured out, oh, all right, that's what they're talking about, it was a very interesting conversation to hear about how a large corporation like Starbucks maintains its innovation. And the one takeaway I had from her remarks, she just basically said, you know, listen to your customer. So I'm thinking, okay, you know, that's really what we attempt to do in the city is, you know, listen to our residents and our business leaders as our customers. So that was a very interesting insight from there. And then the other speaker was a woman who, bear with me, her title was Happiness Astronaut Rocketeer. But the reason it sounds so innovative and out there is because she was hired by the CEO of Zappos who wanted to make a large, extremely large personal investment, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars, in downtown Las Vegas. So basically, what they've done there with the Happiness Astronaut is coordinating is that she's basically an entrepreneurial consulting firm she works for. And they are shepherding 300 downtown project startups in Las Vegas. So basically, think about, and, you know, take the Slow Hot House and, you know, times it by a million. So a lot of lessons there of things that she said that small businesses are experiencing that I think relate to us is, there isn't, if you've ever opened a small business or you work with, for your own business, there are very few things that you're experiencing that other business people have not experienced. So in other words, get yourself a mentor because what you'll find is that what you're going through, what you think your most debilitating challenges are, likely someone else has already faced and found a way through. So that was an interesting way to think about in Morro Bay, how we can share from one another successful businesses can share. And that goes to what we try to do here, which is support our local business first to make sure they are sustainable and that they grow. So that's a way to think about that. And then what they both mentioned as success, keys to success in their environment are two words, which I know we've heard before. The one is collaborate and the other one is communicate. So sometimes it's, you have to hear that come from a happiness astronaut, I suppose, to write it down. But it's just some exciting, interesting, a little bit mind-expanding ways to think about what we do here in Morro Bay. So appreciate the time spent at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. John?
By the way, that was the old downtown of Las Vegas, not the current downtown. So that was a redo of the old, old downtown. From the Harbor Advisory Board, I think the first ever, if I can, at least in the history that I've been around, fundraiser for the Friends of the Harbor Department. They're planning to purchase with the proceeds from an event, and I'll tell you about it in just one second, a new beach wheelchair and possibly some rescue boards to be used by the lifeguards and junior lifeguard program if enough money remains. And they're quote-unquote "very costly items." It is the drive-in movie at the Rock night. How many have been to that before? It's because it hasn't happened. Can you imagine that? It's going to be a great time. It's $10 per adult, $5 for kids 12 and under, and kids five and under are free. They'll have dinners provided by Dockside Restaurant. They'll be available for purchase, chicken ribs, coleslaw, bop horn, cotton candy, et cetera, et cetera. Should be really a good night out. And the date of that, I'm looking for on my note here, is, Eric, remind me, I'm missing it on my, what is it?
Should be Friday, the 13th.
Okay. Now, see, I was just checking. You're absolutely correct. It is November the 13th. Uh-huh. And it does begin parking at 5:30, so get there early. It's limited to 100 cars. And then the movie starts at 6:30. The movie will be a surprise. I'm not going to tell you what it is, but it's a great movie. And I know Noah has seen both of them. They are surf movies. They go way back. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Noah?
Yes, thank you. I would also mention too that for that event, if they're going to have front row seating for people that make it to the event without the car or can park at a distance and walk in. So if you want a front row, bring a chair. I know there are some concerns about the amount of cars they can fit in. So thanks for that update. And I just wanted to give a shout out and thanks to all the volunteers that helped with the street tree planting event that we just had two weekends ago, working mostly on Quintana, planting street trees and planted about, I think, 16 of them? Seventeen? Well, I think 16. One of them-
One of them didn't make it?
Yeah. Well, one of them's recovering-
Yeah, that's right. It's in the hospital.
...local nursery, yeah. But it was a great event. Damaris Hansen from the Public Services Department and our urban forest manager did a fantastic job putting it together, getting her family out to help plant on a Saturday. And then our two groups that really, I don't think we could have done without is Morro Bay and Bloom and the Gorilla Gardeners because they stepped up and helped with the implementation during the day and then also following up with watering. So two very important components for tree planting and of course, all the miscellaneous volunteers that showed up. So it was a good day. And then the last little bit, are you going to say anything about the WRF workshop coming up?
Go ahead.
Okay. We have another water reclamation facility workshop that is following up on the last one we had. And this one will focus on architecture and the neighborhood compatibility components of what the facility could look like, how it would be set in the neighborhood. Currently, we're talking up Highway 41. What is it, what does that mean? What sort of issues do we need to address, like odors and so forth? And how are we, how could we do that? It'll be an open format and I recommend you to participate. It's going to be this Thursday. That's from 6:30 to 8:30 here at the Vets Hall. And the actual date is the 29th, Thursday, the 29th. So please show up to that. We also have some opportunities to provide comment through the website if you can't make it. So keep tracks.
Thanks, Noah. And with that, I believe we've concluded all our announcements. And we will move on to public presentations. Public presentations, we have two tonight. We have the Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Update and the Tourism Bureau Quarterly Update. I believe we're going to set the timer for 10 minutes so we can get through those. And we would like to start off with the Chamber of Commerce. If you'd please come forward.
Am I on? Good evening, everyone. Jennifer Redman, President of the Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here to give our update for the Chamber. Hang on a second, I'm going to make sure. Okay, first, I just want to re-highlight the mission of the Chamber. It is a nonprofit organization that promotes the community's vitality, economic vitality, quality of life, and provides united base for business community to advance and prosper. Our mission at the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce is creating a strong local economy while promoting community and providing networking opportunities and being a partner between the businesses and the government. I first like to give a thank you out to all of our board of directors who give us many hours in volunteerism and also their expertise in their businesses. As you see, we have Cindy Edwards, Robert Red Davis, Chris Christensen, Andrea Lucre, John Elliott, Walter Heath, Bill Shuchek, Joan Solu, Ken McMillan, Travis Ford, and Lori French. They're from a variety of businesses and community organizations and they provide a lot of effort and we just want to say thank you to them for what they do. Chamber activities, what we've done the last couple of months is we have really improved our Chamber website, our community calendar, social media outreach, and forums to help enhance doing business in Morro Bay. We have worked also with the city on working together on the visitor center. And we're focusing on our next work together with the city on the business walk that will be come up in the spring. And that will help owners to let us know what will make them more successful and what they need from the city and the Chamber. Membership advocacy, again, our new website, our business directory, and adding events to help businesses promote themselves and educate themselves. We also do a weekly e-blast to inform and update members on Chamber, city, and community news and upcoming events. We're giving networking opportunities at our mixers, ribbon-cutting ceremonies to welcome new businesses, and also re, kind of reinvent or renew the businesses that are there and let people know more about them. Forums that educate. We also offer bulk mailing discounts for our members and a free ad in the Bay News to help them promote themselves. The Chamber has assisted with city commerce through helping to respond to city councils, city staff, community requests to distribute information through our e-blasts. And that is helping out with sign ordinance, water restriction, modifications to Morro Bay Tourism District, just TUMASH, city permit information, anything we can do to help make aware business owners of what's going on in the city, state, or any changes or things that need to be aware of. Other outreach is like Christine said earlier, is that the city, the Chamber staff and board members are being active in the general plan meetings, merchant association meetings, LEAP initiative meetings, also networking with other chambers to get enriched ideas from their chambers and what's working well to bring it back to our own city. And that's what happened with the Atascadero Chamber with the walk and also the new things with Cindy, our vice president, going out to different things in Slow to meet and see other businesses that are successful and bring it back to Morro Bay so we can help enrich our business owners here too. I want to give a special thanks to our Chamber staff, Liz Gilson, Karen, and Alexandra for all the hard work they have done in that too. We also had a very successful avocado margarita festival. We were able to bring about 8,000 visitors that weekend to Morro Bay. We did extensive media coverage, not as much locally, but more, I would say, in the valley areas and to really bring a lot of buses, which was new for us. We had probably five different bus tours that came in to Morro Bay from that. And we were able to enjoy the festival in Morro Bay. Besides it being a fundraiser for the Chamber, it was also a fundraiser for Morro Bay High School Cheerleaders. We were able to give them $5,006 and they worked very hard for that. So thank you all, the cheerleaders. Also, we were able to help the Morro Bay High School Music Boosters and donate $4,952. And we thank you for the volunteers from that organization. And then Morro Bay Rotary, $1,100. So we feel really excited to bless them and also have it be a festival that affects and enriches many organizations. As many of you know, that the visitor center now is at 695 Harbor Street, the city building there. And we're very excited to have it there and working with the Chamber of Commerce. It has been open since October 1st. And so far this month, we have had 386 visitors. Those visitors have asked about lodging, dining, shopping, free activities, outdoor activities, camping, and also local events that they can do here in Morro Bay. I'd like to give a special thank you to Jan, Ed, and Carrie, who have had many years of experience working the visitor center and now are doing a great job at the new location. The budget for the visitor center, just to update that for everyone, for the first nine months is $37,500. This is a kind of a breakdown of how that money is going to be spent over the next nine months. Of course, we've only had it for less than a month, so some of this will be adjusted. But most of that is going to payroll to cover for the visitor center hours being open and then supplies needed to promote or to give out to visitors. Future projects for the Chamber of Commerce is, we have a very exciting project this Saturday. It is going to be the Merchant Halloween Downtown Chick-or-Treat Costume Parade and Contest. We will be going from 2:00 to 5:00 on Saturday down on Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street, actually closing a section so the children can parade in their costumes and also do a contest. There'll be exciting things like a zombie band and cheerleaders leading the parade. So please, everyone, come down, bring your kids, and enjoy the event. And mostly, get to know the businesses that are down on Main Street and Morro Bay Boulevard and get to learn what they're selling and offering to Morro Bay. The next thing we're doing is March 16th, we'll be doing the business walk and working with the city and local businesses on that and what they need to help them be more successful. In conclusion, just to remind everybody that the Chamber of Commerce has a 120-year reputation as a world organization. Our office handles hundreds of calls, emails, letters monthly about our city commerce, tourism destination, and business community. The Chambers of Commerce are known as an internationally recognized location for getting information when visiting. A city that works with a productive Chamber of Commerce, which collaborates with other organizations, businesses, and community members makes for a successful and profitable community. So thank you for working closely with us and we're excited about the future year. If you have any questions, I can take those at that time.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions from council? I think we're just one. Christine?
It's actually more of a comment and then, as well.
Sure.
Okay. I just wanted to recognize. I was just, we happen to have both the Tourism Bureau giving us their update, their quarterly update as well. So the numbers, I just wanted to ask, the numbers are maybe because of the shift in the location, this is the first month that we've been moving the visitor center-
Yes.
-from one place to the other. So just by the end of October, maybe the numbers will be close to where they were. But I'd be curious to know what they were maybe last year in October. Moving forward, it'd be good to kind of see where the numbers of folks walking in are because I think to compare October to July, August, or even September, that's the information I have in front of me tonight from the Tourism Bureau. It's probably, you know, not quite the right kind of comparison. It's probably month to month, that's best. But I would say if you're seeing that the numbers are maybe not where our target would be, let the city know if there's things that you need us to do to increase people's knowledge of where the location is. So I just wanted to throw that out there for you to make sure that you're letting us know if there are things that you think we could do to support driving people there, in other words. And then I just wanted to personally comment on some changes I've seen in the last year or so. I mean, Jennifer, I want to appreciate and recognize you for your, ending your second term. This will probably be your final quarterly presentation as president. So you'll be stepping down after two years. You've experienced a fair amount of change, which is sort of an understatement, with the organization that's very important to our, our community and to our business owners. So I just want to appreciate the time you've given from your personal life and your own business. Then I love the website update. It looks terrific. I love the e-blasts. I make sure I write everything down that's going on. So it helps me stay in touch with what's going on in the city. And I think that if folks aren't paying attention to those, then they're missing so much information. I appreciate the renewed partnership between the city and the Chamber. I see that there's a lot of city news in there that is factual and clear and it doesn't give an opinion or a bias in any way. It just says, here's the information. And you're telling your constituents and your members that this is what's going on, pay attention to it and comment as you need to. So I appreciate that. I've noticed that. I also think there's great new energy with the forum. And there, I would just encourage, if folks didn't miss, if they didn't attend that forum, I got so much out of it. And I don't even own a business. So I can only imagine if you own a business, what you will be able to learn from the new style of doing forums and bringing in experts in, in our area to talk to us about business. So I would encourage people, that alone is really worth the, worth the membership, I think. And then, yeah, that's all. I said, well, looking forward to the business walk. I was wondering when it's going to be. So it's good to see that as, as March 16. So just, you know, I think that you've, you've all, you're a board of volunteers and I know that you're a lot, you're very hands-on as a board. And I just want to appreciate your extra effort. And I think it's important to have that strong Chamber in our community. So thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
Thank you very much.
[inaudible]
Can I just comment on the monthly, yes. Actually, Jan, Carrie, and Ed did say that they were seeing normal coming in for October. So it is much different than it would be in July. And they were surprised about how many people are coming and finding it. So it did take a little time for the phone number to transfer and different things to come. But this is just in the last couple of weeks. So it's been so successful. And I wanted to thank you. I do appreciate what you said about the last two years. And I'm just thankful I had a great board and a lot of hardworking people on there. And I'm glad that we are such good collaboration between each other, so.
Yeah. Jennifer, I wanted to echo the two-year congratulations. I know, I worked with you for one year, that first year, and there was a lot of change and you spent a lot of personal time, I know, during that year and I'm sure your second year. And so I just appreciate the volunteerism and the spirit of your volunteerism, that you are a great example to the community for that. And thanks to your new board for a great avocado margarita festival. Man, it was fantastic, a one-day event, and it was just outstanding. So good job on that and wish you well in your new life as a private citizen volunteering for one of our advisory committees. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean.
Okay. Jennifer, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
And I'll echo my colleagues' remarks and for all your work. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And with that, we'll move on to our next public presentation. It's our Tourism Bureau Quarterly Update.
I would agree. Jennifer, you've done a really great job for the Chamber. Very, very much appreciated. Yes, good evening. My name is Brent Haugen. I'm the Executive Director for the Morro Bay Tourism Bureau. I want to thank city council as well as staff and the audience here for listening to my update this evening. Just in the element of time, I do want to try to get through all of the information. I actually sent city council as well as city staff the presentation along with the reports so hopefully you guys all receive those. I actually want to start out by presenting the visitor center totals. Traffic to the visitor center for July, August, and September was actually slightly down compared to the year previous. There's actually a little bit of reason for that, and I'll actually get into that a little bit later in my presentation. But we did see quite an uptick as far as like the amount of emails that we received this year compared to last year. Moving on, as far as like the visitor center transition, we did have a successful transition for the visitor center. Operations ended at 255 Morro Bay Boulevard on September 29th. We actually did that to prepare for the, prepare for the move. We had professional movers come and hired, they transferred the furniture collateral and planters to both the Chamber and the Bureau offices respectfully. I do want to send a thank you out to Liz Gilson, the current Director of the Chamber. This wouldn't have been such a successful and smooth transition without her help and her assistance. So thank you, Liz. Moving on here, talking a little bit about the visitor center expenses. We did have a remaining budget carryover from the previous fiscal year of $23,178.86. We, we are actually trending normally as far as like the expenses allocated and budgeted for the three remaining months at the 255 Morro Bay Boulevard. There are still some outstanding bills that I've received this month. And so council, staff, and my board will actually receive a full report as far as like what the final expenses were for, for that. As far as like for Bureau administration, we are trending normally, other than in two areas I want to highlight and- for the three remaining months at the 255 Morro Bay Boulevard. There are still some outstanding bills that I've received this month, and so council, staff, and my board will actually receive a full report as far as like what the final expenses were for that. As far as like for Bureau Administration, we are trending normally, other than in two areas I want to highlight, in computer and communications as well as memberships. Under computer and communications, we did have an issue with connectivity with the internet in our back offices, so that was kind of an unexpected expense that we had to have fixed, so we're a little bit above in that area. Membership, most of our memberships were actually paid in the beginning of the fiscal year. We do have some membership renewals that will happen at the end of December as well as early part of January. So we're trending about 74% expense in that area. For destination marketing, moving forward, we are trending normally here as well, other than in fulfillment and trade shows. Fulfillment, we've seen a postage increase, obviously postage goes up almost every year, you never can tell as far as like where it's going to go. But we also have a higher demand as far as like our visitor guide. We have a new visitor guide that was actually produced last year. Our new one is actually very sought after. We're finding that demand has increased quite a bit for that. Plus, we are expanding, our program was certified folder for additional visibility, especially during the low-season months of January, February, and March. So we're kind of taking advantage of that partnership. As far as trade shows, again, we're always looking at how we can save some costs. We did a lot of early bird pricing, we took advantage of that to make sure that we're kind of saving in the overall general cost when it comes to professional trade shows. One thing, just to highlight too, there is a line item for trade shows, and there's also a different line item for road shows, just to kind of differentiate those. The trade shows are really more professional trade shows where it's actually B-to-B, business-to-business, and then the road shows are more the consumer shows, and that would be like Women's Expos and Family Expos, just to kind of give a differentiation on that. Moving ahead here, the regional marketing and agency costs, we are trending normally here as well. The only area that we are trending a little bit high is in public relations, but we actually had a really successful season for July, August, and September. We had a lot more visiting journalists, and a little bit more than we anticipated. Plus, we actually had our PR agency actually update our media kit, and they did some things specific to Saver, and so we had some nice success with that, and I'll be reporting on that in a little bit. For our sales report, we infused the sales model to better take advantage of attaining more group business for the city of Morro Bay. A lot of our constituents through the county, they don't, they do a little bit as far as like the bus tour market, and also as well as media, but they don't do a lot as far as like sports groups and meetings groups. But we're actually trending higher in performance, which is spectacular for the organization, but it's really due to the partnership that we have with the Recreation Department as well as our partnership with Questa College Sports and Athletics, as well as the Morro Bay High School. We've been bringing in a lot of sports teams and competitions into the area where they were actually, a lot of that, a lot of those overnight business was actually going to the city of San Luis Obispo. So we're capturing a little bit more of that business, which I'm very pleased about. The other part of the sales report here is the sales activities when it comes to the Morro Bay Adventure Pass. Very pleased with that, we had close to $3,000 in sales in that area, and we're hoping to definitely grow that in the future. Moving forward here, talking a little bit about the different markets, you guys have seen these slides before, but it's always great to, you know, kind of continue with the education. Our Tier One markets, and these are in order of importance, Los Angeles, Central Valley, San Francisco, San Jose, and San Diego. Our Tier Two are definitely seasonal markets for us, because our budgets don't quite expand that long. But we are reaching out to Sacramento, Phoenix, Reno, Las Vegas, and Houston, and this is really kind of the first time for our organization, other than in some of the digital space. Our Tier Three markets, we actually couldn't do this without the partnership with Visit California, as well as Central Coast Tourism Council, as well as Visit San Luis Obispo County. So collectively, we're actually reaching out to these international markets of Australia, Canada, China, Brazil, and Mexico. Just covering a little bit as far as like trade shows and expos, we participated in the San Luis Obispo Pride in the Plaza in July, the Baby and Child Expo in August, and the Central Coast Women's Conference in September. But some of the things that I definitely wanted to highlight, because this has been a point of contention somewhat with some of our stakeholders when it comes to Saver the Central Coast. We really went a different direction this year as far as like our sponsorship, we reduced the sponsorship, but we focused our sponsorship on sponsoring a media tent at Saver the Central Coast. We had an opportunity to be able to pitch story ideas on Sunday, and which we had some great success with that, as far as like the sustainable and the commercial fishing here. As far as like the Saver Adventure Tour, I know, I heard from constituents here that they liked, that they really loved seeing that to come back, and so we did that this year. We had people actually go out kayak fishing, and then they watched some demonstrations done by the Central Coast Women for Fisheries, and then ended the day with the Ocean Table Luncheon at the Inn at Morro Bay. Some great things came out of that. We had one of the editors from Sunset Magazine, Margot True, and she really fell in love with the ladies from Central Coast Women for Fisheries, so I wouldn't doubt that we won't see some articles on that, and she also fell in love with the new chef at the Inn at Morro Bay. So I think we're going to see some coverage there as well. Moving forward here, we have a great set of promotions coming up. The team is working on collecting holiday events for Holiday Happenings Page, plus working on the Free Gift Friday promotion with local businesses. Partnerships, you can see here, we often, we always are working on continual partners, partnerships to, with different businesses and organizations to help expand our business reach, see those there. And short and long-term goals, just want to highlight some things on there. We are expanding into niche markets, and it's going very well, especially expanding with the LGBT market. Lifestyle Research, we're going to be partnering with the Visit San Luis Obispo County on a PRISM study this fall and winter, we're going to be sharing that with city, with Chamber, and also Merchants Association. But just to highlight, I'm seeing that the light is coming on, so I want to go to the marketing highlights. We're actually up in the following areas, 144% increase in mobile visits over last year. We have increased, a 34% increase in Twitter followers, 44% increase in Twitter mentions. But on a PR standpoint, we hosted nine journalists in this time period, our goal is 18 for the year. Travel features, we're in LA Times for National Oyster Day, in 805 Living on the Morro Bay Adventure Pass, SocialThrills.com, a great article on Morro Bay Escape. And then lastly, LeaveYourDailyHell.com was a hosted blogger that we had, and he did a phenomenal pictorial article on the authentic Morro Bay experience. So thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight, and I'm available to answer any questions, just in the nick of time.
Yeah, thank you, Brent. Always a thorough report, and there's actually some additional information for us in this as well. Is the, all this available, other than just this printed copy?
I actually have provided all the information to the city clerk, and so that actually could be posted, yes.
Electronically, and stuff like that?
Yep, it could be posted right on the city website.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions? Christine?
Oh, thank you very much, it's great to see the information. And then I guess I'll follow up on the mayor's question. So is this on the Morro Bay Tourism website? Can we find, is this information there too? I wasn't sure.
I can actually post that on there. So it actually, that's why I provided also to city staff, so it could be on the city website as well as our website. Sometimes it's a little challenging trying to navigate to the Tbid MBTV part of the website, but yes, we could definitely actually have that posted by the end of the week.
Yeah, I usually go to your site to read about the things you're doing there, because I know that's where you're posting things, and so that's, just as long as that's there, so I can find it again. I actually am happy to see us go back to do a Saver event here in Morro Bay, and it's, you know, sometimes I know it costs something to do those events, but I think it sounds like it was pretty economical and really interesting. Definitely, you know, if you turn on Sunset to some activity that's unique here, they will, we have seen reaping the benefits from that, so that's a good connection. And it's just a really small question, but 18 people showed up, 22 paid, we still got their money, right?
We still did, yes, we did.
All right.
And in actuality, when it comes to sponsorship, prior to, we had a $28,000 sponsorship in the past. We actually dropped that sponsorship down to $10,000. We actually got more return on investment, I believe, this year, especially when it came to the probability that there's going to be articles in Sunset Magazine.
Yeah, right.
You really can't buy that type of PR, so.
No, I think that will, yeah, I can't wait to see it, I'm sure we'll see it soon from Sunset. So then the other thing is I'm glad to see the partnership with regional groups doing the same thing we do, because I think that there's a piece for that, for Morro Bay and the broader market. Does it mean that we're going to have, you're going to be overwhelmed by it, but I think we need to be a player at the table, because I do think that there is a piece we can have of that overall market. So it's good to see the, all the work you're doing to connect and to network, I think that will benefit us, and I think it's a good way to leverage, as we talked about a little bit earlier, the connections with the county. And then this is a really tiny thing. Well, it's up to anyone else on the council if they wanted to dive in, but there was, I'm looking for it, you mentioned in one of the pages, economic, maybe you can find it quickly, or more quickly than I can, but economic impact.
Oh, yes. It's actually in the, it's actually in the sales report, and so how we actually do that with economic impact, we actually take the number of rooms, and we actually look at what is considered the ADR for the area, so average daily rate. Now granted, in the recent report, our ADR has actually increased from 112 to, I believe, 121. So we are going to have to adjust that, so it's just, but it's a part of ADR, but then there was also an equation that the Tbid Advisory Board has actually provided to me at $225 per room. So I think we're going to have to take a look at that and update that, and make sure that, you know, everybody's in understanding of like where that number comes from. Because on a national standpoint, there's different numbers as far as like what US Travel uses, as far as like what that is per room, and in a larger metropolitan city, it's obviously larger than what it is here, so we just really have to be realistic as far as like what that dollar amount is here in Morro Bay.
Okay, and then the line above that, that's great, I was curious about that, then the line, the total estimated room nights, does that mean for this period of time, things that you went out and sold, it turned into 536 rooms?
Correct, correct. And actually, some of it's, a lot of it's actually in the future, so we're actually securing business in the future. So when you do see the total night, total room nights, that can be the impact specifically for Morro Bay, not necessarily within this time period, but it actually could be like October, it could be November, it could be actually into 2016. And so our sales manager is actually working with a lot of events that are happening in 2016, January, February, where we really kind of, where we really need that business. And so some of that reflects some of the tournaments that happen through recreation, some of those were actually the competitions through Questa College. So a lot of that, what you're seeing here is really Questa Recreation. The report that you'll actually see the next time will actually reflect more of that, the events that are actually happening in that, more in the 2016 period of time.
Okay, great, yeah, I think that's also wise to make those connections with the city and leverage what we already have.
Right.
Okay, and then last question, during the day, our billboard on Highway One, it seems like you can't see it as much, but at night, of course, that's reflecting really well, so I'm wondering, has anybody else noticed that? You just can't quite see it as sharply as you used to be able to.
Well, we, oftentimes, you always learn from some of the mistakes that you made in the past, and unfortunately, when things look good on, you know, when they're on PDFs and things like that, they look good there, but not necessarily, you know, in the sunlight. We are actually going to be updating the billboard in the month of November, so hopefully it'll be done in November and December, but we did learn a lot as far as like what type of photograph that needs to be on there, and when you use that reflective, that coding on the text, it actually, it makes it a little bit more difficult to actually read it in the sunlight, so.
No, I understand, but then I will say, on a positive note, I appreciate the adding, it's become this past year's much more focused effort to put individual events that are happening in the city at the bottom of the billboard. So that's really also a great step forward and a collaborative effort, and I appreciate that.
Well, I will tell you, as far as like the billboard, one of the first things that I did as being the director, there was a lot of liability issue, because everybody was actually going and putting their own signage on the billboard, which, having the discussion with the owners of the land, that if anybody were to get hurt on the property, there was really kind of this, who's going to be liable for that? And so we really had to, we had to cut out that system and actually add in a whole new system. So actually doing, you know, posting the events and having that ability to do that, we're actually assuming those costs right now, but in 2016, we're hoping that we can have some of the events actually help offset some of those costs. But we had to create a more safe program to help promote events, and so I think it was a great compromise.
Yes, well, safer is also, it looks better too.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Exactly.
Okay, thanks a lot for the report, that's all.
Thanks, Christine. Anybody else?
Brent, thanks for a very comprehensive overview, and thanks for the great metrics, I appreciate that. I noticed the public relations ROI for July through September, very helpful data, thank you for that. A couple of questions, just, or one question, I should say, on your social media outreach. Just curious, for Facebook, Facebook likes, impressions, Twitter, Instagram, what do you find is the best social media advertising return on investment value vehicle?
It's the beautiful scenery shots. You know, honestly, when it comes down to all of the social media channels, where we actually get the best return on investment is actually taking those shots of Morro Bay, those unexpected beautiful shots, getting those posted, we get the best return, we get the most interaction, we get the most shares happening. Even with Twitter, you know, and Instagram, it's like, we're seeing a lot more activity, and we're actually finding that through our industry as a whole. One of the things that actually happened today, we had the Central Coast Tourism Council Website and Membership Subcommittee happen, and so they gave Morro Bay kudos, because I basically, I provide a lot of information on stories and things like that. And in the month of August, September, and October, Morro Bay actually, we actually outplayed pretty much every other city that, from basically Morgan Hill down to Thousand Oaks, because we're providing that content and that information. And it happened to be in the month of September, we saw a huge uptick because of two posts that I actually provided, and one was actually a drone shot, it was this beautiful drone shot, and that was actually the first part of September. And then the other part of September, we actually provided a, it was an article kind of talking about that Morro Bay escape, and there were some beautiful shots with that. And that was actually the second highest post that they had on Facebook for the Central Coast Tourism Council. So ultimately, because we have a beautiful destination, we can provide those shots, that's really where we're, where we're doing a little bit more investment with time and also with resources.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Brent, appreciate the presentation.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you very much. And with that, that'll conclude our public presentations, and as we move into public comment, we open it up with our business spot, and for tonight's business spot, we'd like to welcome Ben Greenhaw as the spokesman for the Salvation Army located here in Morro Bay at 540 Quintana, Morro Bay. Welcome, Ben. Come on up and let us know a little bit about the Salvation Army.
Okay, thank you for your time, this will be real short. The Salvation Army has been in Morro Bay for over 20 years, serving the Morro Bay, Los Sosos, Cayucas communities. We recently remodeled our office, and would love to invite anyone out there in the community to come and look at our improvements. The Salvation, excuse me, the Salvation Army Morro Bay Offices provides utility assistance, food boxes, tents, sleeping bags, and various seasonal assistance. This updated location will help us to expand our, out our services in the Morro Bay and surrounding areas. However, we do need help in the following areas. A few ways that people can help, volunteer at our office, answer the phones, office work, prepare food boxes, et cetera. Donate your time and money, the money is tax deductible, whatever you donate. Definitely right now at this time, we definitely need people to ring bells for Christmas time and help schedule bell ringers. Salvation Army Christmas Kettle, this is the main fundraiser for the Salvation Army. The financial support, the Salvation Army Morro Bay Service Extension Office receives each year from ringing the bell, helps provide Christmas for hundreds of families and other vital services throughout the year. 90% stays in our community to make our Christmas Kettles campaign even more successful. We need your help, please sign up today to voluntary time to ring the bells, and anything else you can do. Christmas stats, real quick, for 2014, we did help with 140 families in our community. Individuals was about 533. Food certificates from, we got for Cricket Croc was 140, and the toys for the children was approximately 1,013. And then we also provide throughout the year food boxes, utility assistance, information and referrals, summer camps for kids ages 8 to 12, bus passes for San Luis and referrals, summer camps for kids ages eight to 12, bus passes for San Luis County for if you have a doctor appointment, et cetera, emergency disaster services, homeless assistance, seasonal assistance, Christmas toys and food, and the opportunity to volunteer. I just want to thank all my volunteers that helped, all the volunteers that helped throughout the year for Christmas time for bell ringing, because that's our main income that we get because we're nonprofit. And this community does an excellent job of helping out for that and throughout the year. So I want to say thank you for the city of Morro Bay and how they help us throughout the year with everybody that comes in for helping us through money and volunteering. But we do need more help with volunteers and things like that. But this community, how small it is, I think we do a lot better than a lot of big places. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ben. Thanks for your service. Appreciate it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. We're at 540 Quintana in Morro Bay. It's the same parking lot as Cookie Crock, but we're like on the other side. And you can reach us at 772-7062. Sorry, sorry about that.
Perfect. Thanks, Ben.
You have a good night.
Do you have a website?
You too, Jennifer.
Do you have a website?
No.
No, thank you. Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. And with that, we'll open up public comment for items not on the agenda. You have three minutes. Please come forward and we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening. My name's Robert Davis and I'm speaking tonight as a member of the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber is reaching out to the community to help us select Morro Bay's Citizen of the Year and Living Treasure for 2015. We are asking for nominations to come back to the Chamber. I have placed nomination forms on all of the chairs here tonight, and I please ask everyone here to, to take one. We're also going to place the nomination forms at City Hall, at Recreation Services, at the Chamber Office, and at our beautiful library. I've also asked Neil to put the information in the Bay News. And Chamber members will have these at their businesses as well. So we're asking the entire community, please, if you know someone who deserves one of these honors, please give us the name and the reasons. The Chamber will select the final honorees and we will present the awards at our installation dinner, January 8th, at the golf course. Thank you.
Thank you, Red.
public notification for the Fugro CSL OGPP permitting. I appreciate that the city did address this matter earlier in, in opening comments. I take issue with the comments, especially the comment that the public noticing was done correctly. It absolutely was not. And I'd like to read to you from the Low Energy Offshore Geophysical Permit Program, One Year Program Implementation Report, October 14, 2010. I'm the Chair of Coast Alliance, and Coast Alliance participated in an implementation program revamp of the CSL OGPP. It's an ongoing process. However, I'd like to read from 3.3 Public Notification, 3.31 Survey Notification Requirements. Because low-energy geophysical surveys result in the presence of survey vessels and associated equipment that may interrupt or affect other ocean users in the survey area, it is important to ensure interested and affected parties are aware that a survey will be taking place. In addition, to help those that are not on OGPP serve list, which most people aren't, the general public, the permittees are required to provide a 21-day notice of survey activities via email or regular mail to the US Coast Guard, local notice to mariners, as well as to the harbor masters and dive shops located in near the survey area. This ensures that local entities and individuals who may be, who may not be aware of the OGPP are alerted of upcoming geophysical activities in their area. Further, 4.3.2 Pre-Survey Notification to Harbor Masters and Dive Shops. Exhibit E, Condition A2 of the General Permit requires permittee to notify harbor masters and dive shops in the survey area at least 21 days prior to commencing geophysical survey activities. And goes on here, this condition is intended to alert local individuals or parties who may not be subscribers to the OGPP List Serve. Okay. Anyway, I take serious issue with the, with the opinion of the city that, that proper notification was taken. And I am following it up at a state level.
Thank you, Marla. Public comment is open. For those who'd like to speak, please come forward.
My name is Linda Fidel. I'm a resident of Morro Bay. And I'm here as co-coordinator with Nancy Castle of the Food Group and the Community Dinners. I'm here to speak about Craig Miller, who died last week. Like many others, Craig was an unsung hero in what I consider to be an extremely generous town. Many knew him as Big Greg. He was a big man. He was gruff. He was a man of strong views that were firmly held, that made him an interesting person to talk to. But he had a heart as big as the all outdoors. The community dinners began January 6th of 2014. For a year and a half, Greg showed up every Monday evening to put up the tables and chairs before the dinners, to stick around and take them down after the dinners, to sweep the floors, and generally to help us leave Veterans Hall better than we found it. It wasn't an easy job. And for part of that time, Greg was working alone. As of last night, we have fed 4,341 guests at the community dinners. We might have been able to do it without Craig, but it would have been extremely difficult. We, Greg, Craig has now been replaced by three people. Craig Gossett, Mark Minter, and Private Steve Yarling, they have stepped in. They're making it possible for us to continue. But truly, Greg Miller was one of the unsung heroes of Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Thanks for speaking on his behalf.
John Elliott, resident of Morro Bay. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I'm here again to remind our community of the Downtown Halloween Trick or Treat event on Saturday, October 31st, Halloween, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. Maps of participating businesses will be available for pickup at 1:45 p.m. at Grandma's Frozen Yogurt, Main Street, and Morro Bay Boulevard. Trick or Treat, the downtown, starting at 2:00 p.m. There will be a zombie marching band at 3:45 p.m. to kick off the walking costume parade, followed by a costume contest with prizes. Please sign up for the costume contest when you get your map. I want to thank the 75 businesses and organizations who are participating and the volunteers and organizations who have helped to make this year's Downtown Trick or Treat event happen. There's still room for businesses and organizations to participate. Simply show up with a table and a treat at 1:45 p.m. on Halloween at Main Street and Morro Bay Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Seventy-five businesses. That's great.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Linda Merrill, and I'm a Morro Bay citizen. I'd like to have everyone consider taking a walk on our new Marina Walk that skirts our estuary. We have the most amazing amount of birds that have just arrived from the far north. There are like millions of birds in the bay right now. This is a magnificent bird. You probably all know its name. It's called a pintail. And one of the more beautiful ducks in our bay. The next one is just our common mallard, but for some reason, when you see them in the wild, they're much more beautiful than just at the park or somewhere like that. Next is a canvasback. And he comes to visit in more, in our estuary as well. And a really aesthetically beautiful bird. And next, I think, is the wood duck. Thank you. This is a wood duck. And we don't see a lot of these, but they are in our area. They're especially beautifully marked, I think, and, and really special. And that is a Canada goose, Canada goose. We have the black brant, which is similar to this huge bird and is especially plentiful in our estuary right now. I'd like to mention that the Winter Bird Festival is coming up in January, but if you all want to, I'm not sure. I think this is a green winged teal. I'll probably get phone calls about that, that I've misidentified it. But I think it's a green winged teal. And thank you. The Winter Bird Festival, you can sign up on the website, and it is so popular that many of the, the things that they're providing gets filled up right away. And they're having special children's programs this year. And I really would encourage you to find that on the website. Also, I'd like to thank Eric and his staff for rescuing the little baby sea otter that was found on the sand spit. That's really special. I was really surprised that they were here that early. I thought that it wouldn't be until the spring. So that was really especially nice. And thank you for rescuing it. Anyway, thank you all for letting me speak.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Taylor Newton, and I'm a citizen of Morro Bay as well as a business owner. I'm also the supervisor for the Morro Bay Gorilla Gardening Club nonprofit. And that's related to what I have to say tonight. I wanted to thank the Public Works Department in the city of Morro Bay for the street tree planting on Quintana, as well as in the downtown area. I wanted to back up Noah and remind everybody that the Historical Society also participated on that. Thank you for everybody who participated. I wanted to follow up on John. The Gorilla Gardening Club will be down there for the Halloween Trick or Treat event this Saturday. And we'll be making that a recycled event with a zero-waste effort. I wanted to also remind the town and the public that this Sunday, Sunday afternoon, November 1st, at the community center is the Superbration. You can purchase tickets at superbration.org. And that benefits the Pacific Wildlife Center, which is based here in Morro Bay. It's a really important organization, organization, and the Superbration benefits that. And let's see, I wanted to follow up with something on the agenda tonight. I won't be able to stay, so I'm just going to address that real quick. The, well, I would call it clear-cutting of the habitat down in the creek that starts in Del Mar and it heads out to the ocean of the, their, the Willow Habitat. I took notice of it right away when it happened. We're very active, the nonprofit, I run the Gorilla Gardening Club. And we were out there and saw it within days of it happening. And it was bothersome to me and my organization and what I teach to the young adults and the communities, the people of this community about how we treat the environment and proper planning. And in the, that stream of conversation of proper planning, I wanted to re, remind Public Works and everybody that, you know, a good functioning tree committee is a resource that relates not only to street trees, but all public plantings, as well as habitat. Because you have, just like advisory committees, boards, you have a group of people who are actually educated in that realm that you get for free. So, you know, like me personally, I'm, I was on the tree committee, which isn't active anymore. And I have a degree in ecology systematic biology. I worked for a mitigation bank up in Lodi. I worked for UC Davis for the Aquatic Toxicology Center. I worked on naval grants studying water. You get that for free. The last thing I wanted to say is I cannot tell you how proud I am of Morro Bay's tourism industry with our support of the LGBT. And we also include the QIA, LGBTQIA, community. I think it's so important to make that public. Thank you.
Thanks, Taylor.
I figured I'd keep the best for last here, my hat being all ready for Saturday's party. I'll be down on the street and tricking and treating. But what I really want to talk about-
Is this Nancy Castle at the, at the podium?
Oh, that's right. I am, aren't I? Nancy Castle, Morro Bay native. I want to talk about Thanksgiving. Exactly a month from now, 7:00, 10:00 p.m., I expect to be at home with my feet up and a glass of wine, because we'll be done. The Gorilla Gardeners will have cleaned up the community center. It'll be back to cherry condition. This on the overhead is a sample of our, the draft poster. We aren't quite done yet. We don't know all the names we're going to have on it. And I need the clicker. Who's got the clicker? We've had, we've had great success collaborating and communicating with many groups in town to get a lot of the food prepared. However, we need additional groups to help us, or restaurants, somebody, group to do yams, the vegetable medley, and pies. But we can buy them, but we'd really like to get the community involved in helping provide those. There's other ways we can, you can volunteer. The Chuck Stoll, I didn't mention that, and I are the co-coordinators this year. This is a new regime. And we are open to volunteers. The former people who did it said, don't ask for volunteers, you'll get too many. But we would really like the community to come out and help. Many things. We need more publicity. Obviously, we only have a month left. Advanced cooks, servers, hostesses, decorators, and all-around helpers. One of the things that I'm excited about, of course, is the decorating. Can you, can you guess that? I'd really like to have some corn stalks, a couple of faded scarecrows, and a whole bunch of the little pumpkins and things that are holiday decorations. So if you've got extra, and I didn't mention yet, but the senior center is being our coordinator, and I've got to talk really fast. We need entertainers. I'm looking for outside entertainers while people are standing in line. I'm going to get my jugglers, Noah. Please, if you know anybody. And hokey pokey leaders. We really need some strong hokey pokey leaders, because if so many show up to volunteer, we're just going to send everybody outside to do the hokey pokey. Because that is what it's all about. The Thanksgiving Morro Bay Dinner, if you want to come help, call the senior center. They'll take your information down. Either Chuck or I will get back to you, whether you're a cooking person, which is going to be Chuck's regime, or a front-of-the-house person, which is where I'm going to hang out. And we also will do deliveries. The Marvelous Police, Morro Bay Police Officers Association, the officers, will deliver meals. We'd much rather have you come- We'd much rather have you come down and join us. It's going to be a party. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Anybody else for a public comment after that? Well, thank you. And with that, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Thanks for everybody's comments and input and announcements. We appreciate that. Any comments from council to my right? Seeing none to my left?
I think that it was great to recognize Greg Miller's attendance at the community dinners and I know that he really, it was his strength that helped out physically set up tables and chairs and that's no small feat for anyone who's ever done an event. I just wish we had probably said thanks before he passed away, but I appreciate that, coming out and making mention of a great volunteer.
Thanks, Christine. And with that, we'll close our public comment and move on to consent agenda. And consent, we have public comment for any item on consent, for those that'd like to speak to any item. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. And as far as items, I'd like to pull item A3. Any other items to pull? A2. So items A2, so I take a motion to approve items A1, A4 and A5.
Subpo.
We have a motion by Mr. Heading, second by-
Second.
-by Mr. Smuckler. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Item A2.
Just a quick update. I appreciate our city clerk Swanson's quick attention and it's just basically, I think she sent it to all of you earlier, just I wanted to clarify that I only did meet one time with both Alaa Weinstein and Eric Markell. That's page eight of the minutes from October 13th. If you all saw them, then we're all good to go. So then if, unless anyone else, anyone has anything else, then I'll move approval of A2. Okay. Move approval of A2.
Second.
As amended. Oops, C Daisy.
As amended, okay. So we have a motion to approve item A2 as amended by Ms. Johnson and seconded by Mr. Heading. And any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. Item 3, actually, there might be more discussion on that. I'd like to just pick that up at the end of the meeting, so I want to get, I'd like to get through the rest of the meeting. Item is on the agenda and we'll just pick that up at the end with approval from the board here.
Yes, indeed.
Okay, good. So with that, we'll leave item A3 open. I'll look for our madam city clerk to remind me just in case. And with that, we'll move on to public hearings, which are none. And then our first item on unfinished business is item C1 and that's discussion of unwarranted traffic control devices, rescission of resolution number 3815 regarding placement of stop signs at the intersection of Pacific and Main Street and consideration of alternative traffic calming measures. And I'm trying to be mindful of the agenda and get through all our presentations quickly so we can have good discussion and move on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Get a presentation up. So this is a revisitation of an item that we talked about earlier this year, a stop sign at the intersection of Pacific and Main Streets. Resolution 3815 was passed by the city council directing staff to install stop signs at the intersection of Main and Pacific. We're asking you to rescind that resolution, establish a policy against the installation of unwarranted devices and provide any recommendations on alternatives to unwarranted traffic control devices such as traffic calming. Background, we prepared a warrant analysis to determine whether a stop sign was needed at that location based on citizen request. That warrant analysis indicated that none of the eight warrants were met for the installation of the stop sign, but based on compelling public testimony, a citizen petition, the council directed staff to install those stop signs there. Right after that meeting, Public Works staff was sent to our insurance providers, Public Works Academy, hosted by the California Joint Powers Insurance Association, no, Authority. And there was a specific class about unwarranted devices. The workshop was "The Little Mistakes That Are Costing Us A Lot," unwarranted traffic Why they're not needed. FWH, Federal Highway Administration, FWHA, shown they really don't reduce speeds, they don't make intersections safer. The city loses their design immunity in the case of if there is something that happens at a stop sign and we need to rely on a defense that there was a legitimate design to install that device. We need to rely upon standards to install that device. That causes a financial risk to the city. Alternatives to installing unwarranted traffic. Do nothing. If they're not warranted, there's not the traffic volumes, not the pedestrian volumes, there's not really something needed there. Install traffic calming. I stole this line from our police community, SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. It's basically, traffic calming is changing driver behavior through installation of physical improvements. So bulbouts, chicanes, roundabout, mini roundabouts do that. They alter driver behavior. And traffic calming features do not require a warrant analysis. Goals of traffic calming are many besides just the traffic aspects. They're said to improve quality of life, incorporating the all-users into the street, creating safe and attractive streets, helping to reduce the negative effects of motor vehicles on the environment, promoting pedestrian cycle and transit use. Objectives include slowing speeds, reducing collisions and severity, increasing safety and the perception of safety. Highlighted that because if you tend to believe that it's unsafe, it might be. Reducing the need for police enforcement. We install stop signs there where they may not be needed. There could be violations of those stop signs. People rolling through them, running those stop signs when they never see the cross traffic. For them to be effective, there needs to be some enforcement there and traffic calming could reduce that enforcement requirement. Some traffic calming devices can, such is pervious pavement, speed tables, increased water infiltration and increase the access for all modes of transportation. Some of the traffic calming measures can stop cut through traffic through neighborhoods. I don't know if you've been to Berkeley recently, but many of their streets have diagonal curbs through the middle of the intersection to stop through traffic. So you have to veer off to another route. It reduces speeds through those long stretches of streets. We did a traffic study, showed that there was really no operational issues with that intersection. We believe that it's a perceived traffic issue. Traffic calming does not require warrants. Traffic calming can serve multiple functions such as behavior modification, serve as an entrance feature, beautification and stormwater control. Some of the traffic calming measures that are explored in the staff report include a neighborhood traffic circle, choker or bulbouts constructed. And one I remember from working in the city of San Luis on the intersection of Osos and I believe Pacific that may have just been replaced by, after their experiment with the bulbouts there for 10 years, was replaced by concrete bulbouts. But they're painted and embossed onto the street. It gives that visual friction, but it's much less costly than construction out of concrete. Raised intersections, so that speed table going through the intersection. Radar feedback signs is another where you have a speeding issue like we have on Quintana. Not sure that one, I think it gives us feedback of how fast you're actually going, doesn't slow anybody down. But I've noticed a lot of people breaking using the one on Main Street under the freeway. Intersection murals, something we've talked about. They're in the traffic calming handbook. There's not a whole lot of data on them as of yet. They're fairly new, innovative. Portland's used them, Seattle's used them, some cities back east. Really not sure how they calm traffic yet, but maybe causing some visual interest. They're fairly inexpensive, too. That's probably one of their key advantages. Or the combination of several measures. PWA recommendations, we took this to our Public Works Advisory Board a few weeks ago to relook at the warrants. Liked the use of concept of traffic calming, but they didn't like the cost associated with the hard construction. They wanted low-cost solutions. Their recommendations were to be to paint high-visibility crosswalks across Main Streets. Crosswalks do require some justification based on the pedestrian volume. Add a cross-traffic-does-not-stop sign on Pacific Street and perhaps a mural. Here's a picture out of Google Earth of that intersection I was talking about in San Luis and as you're approaching the intersection, looks like with the different color and texture, appears to be a bulbout there in the street, but it's at the same elevation as the street and it's painted and embossed on the surface. Fairly, a very cost-effective solution there and that one, I know, has been in place for about 10 years till they just replaced it with concrete ones this, within the last couple of weeks. It has the advantage of, you see here, there's bike lanes going through there. They didn't need to adjust lane widths to still accommodate the bike lanes. It was not an impediment to emergency vehicle traffic. Forgot to mention that, that typically most of the restrictions in width of the pavement will reduce emergency vehicle response times. I think average of five seconds per traffic calming device. Conclusions, traffic control devices are an important aspect of roadway design. Unwarranted devices are inconvenient and potentially dangerous. Unwarranted traffic control devices pose a fiscal threat to the city. Properly installed traffic calming measures may be an alternative. When it's not appropriate to install a traffic control device, i.e. warrants not met or required for traffic calming. Cost-effective traffic calming can be an option, especially construction of, when construction of hard traffic calming devices cannot be met due to budgetary concerns, I think is what I was trying to write there. And the PWA recommended low-cost options for this location such as paint. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Rob. And with that, we'll get into questions from council, open it up to public comment and bring it back for discussion and deliberation. And Noah, you want to start us off?
Sure. I don't have any specific questions. I've been able to go over this a couple of times now with Mr. Livick and sitting through the PWA meeting, but I did just want to confirm that the idea of the painted bulbouts concept, we would need to, what sort of action do we need to take to be able to utilize that tool? There was some discussion about limitations based on that particular area. Is there anything, because it is an interesting approach, is there anything that we would need to do as additional actions?
Now, traffic calming devices are not subject to warrant analysis, so we can, there's been, in my research and reading some of the great legislation that the state has done in some case law, traffic calming devices are not subject to the same warrant analysis that a stop sign or a yield sign or even, you know, high-vis crosswalks would be subject to. So really, we don't need to do anything with the painted crosswalks. It doesn't impinge on drainage measures. It doesn't affect the bike lanes there. You can, you know, ride straight across them. I think it's a, that's why the city of San Luis Obispo chose that technique about 10 years ago to give it a try because they didn't have the budget to construct something there and they wanted to give that visual friction to alert drivers that they're coming into more of a downtown.
I think if you can see, oh, it's just off the picture. There's a pedestrian actually standing out in that kind of-
Mike, Rob, we can't hear you when you're turned away.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
There's actually a pedestrian standing in that bolded-out area waiting to cross the street there.
What would you estimate the cost for that to be and could that be an in-house project?
Painting can be an in-house project. If we want to do the embossed brick pattern, then we need to have somebody, it's just a stamp that goes down, heats up the asphalt and stamps the asphalt. Not sure that that is necessary, that we need the look of the brick there. Yes, it could be an in-house. That's probably about $500 worth of paint there.
Okay, thank you. With that, we would reserve quite a bit to also try to address some of the other intersections in town that we have identified a need for.
Yes, we've heard, you know, especially around Delmar School, the need for traffic calming measures. In the West Beach tract, there's a desire for traffic calming measures there also. So it's not just in the downtown, it's throughout the community. My advice is slow down a little bit. It's easy.
Do you recommend that we install another radar sign along South Main in certain strategic position as well or do you not recommend that at this point?
You know, the approach speeds to this intersection were 25 miles an hour was the 85th percentile speed. I think further south on Main Street, folks are traveling a little bit faster. If I were going to install a radar warning sign here, it would be south of Marina where you're approaching the 25 mile an hour speed zone, not right at this intersection, too. So you can drop down from that 35 to 25 miles an hour there.
All right.
Those signs are in the neighborhood of $5,000 to $7,000, depending on what features we want.
Thanks, Noah. John?
I'm sorry, Rob. You said the average speed approaching this intersection was?
25 miles an hour.
25 miles per hour. So if I read the recommendation on choker bulbouts, the average reduction is about 4%, which I would calculate at about one mile per hour?
Yeah.
Reduction?
Reduction in speeds.
So, like, seems like not a lot.
Not a lot. It gives, the other advantage is it's a shorter crossing distance for pedestrians. They have a shorter distance to cross the street. We've heard that is an issue there. And if we, this is successful when we go to a more permanent bulbout. It could perhaps serve multiple purposes as an entrance feature to the city, landscaping, that sort of thing. Painted bulbouts, not so much of that feature, but yeah, you're not going to get a drastic change in driver behavior because of it. You're going to get some reductions. And that, what I quoted was the 85th percentile speed, so it's how, as engineers, we set speed limits. We determine a speed limit based on what a reasonable driver will drive that at and the 85th percentile is the reasonable driver.
Have you considered rumble strips? And if so?
No, I probably would not recommend rumble strips.
And if not, why not? And if not, why not?
Potential for claims due to folks with spinal cord injuries. Same issue is with aggressive speed bumps. If you put in something that jars that car a lot, you're going to get claims for those, from those folks with, you know, spinal cord injuries.
Yeah, and I was actually really thinking about the very low-level ones that kind of wake you up when you're on the freeway, doing 60 on the way to the airport, and you kind of veer off the edge of the road and all of a sudden you have.
Yeah, those do take a little bit of speed to get them to give you that noise. I've never seen them or heard of them being used in residential street speeds.
Christine?
Just a quick question that made me think of something else. So do you think that the noise, there is a noise factor to that, which I guess in a residential area, maybe, maybe that's why they're not in a residential area?
That, same thing with speed bumps. They do cause noise. My experience with speed bumps in other cities is, once you put them in, the folks that didn't come to the hearing to ask for them put in are coming to the hearing asking for them to be removed.
Take them out. I understand completely. Okay, really quickly, you mentioned crosswalk justification, so I don't want us to get all excited about something and then turns out we can't even paint a crosswalk. So you did briefly mention crosswalk justification is not as great, so you're not, crosswalk justification is like a mirror hole?
We need to do a pedestrian count there. We don't have a good pedestrian count, but to actually do that survey, our traffic counter, tube counter, bicycles and cars and trucks, it does a great job at, because they run over the tubes. Pedestrians, we don't have a good mechanical way besides setting somebody out there and count trips.
Okay, and then I think if, just to keep in mind that that area gets a lot more traffic on the weekends sometimes than during the week potentially?
Yes.
So just if you're going to count, maybe, you know, Monday is not the day to count, unless it's following a long weekend, just kind of, you know, that's a question. When do you count for something like pedestrians in Morro Bay?
You would want to count during a, you don't design for the worst-case event typically with traffic. You will recognize that you will have some issues during some events, so you probably wouldn't use 4th of July as your design event. But a typical spring or summer weekend, or a busy fall weekend, wouldn't be a bad time to count pedestrians. And ideally, we would use intern help to do that. Or perhaps our weekend maintenance crew in between their bathroom cleanings, maybe we can send them over there for a couple hours to count pedestrians.
Okay, thank you very much. No more questions.
Thanks. Rob, can you describe the high-vis crosswalk? Is that a high-visibility crosswalk that's up on screen?
That's a high-vis crosswalk. That's with the zebra stripes across it. That's what's considered a ladder, high-vis, zebra-stripped crosswalk.
And so, in addition, you know, we were talking about different applications throughout the city, and so I was looking at that in addition to Pacific and Main in this conversation. And just the downtown intersections, every Morro Bay Boulevard intersection, interesting as we talk about this, there's no stop sign at Pacific and Main. We're talking about one, but every stop sign, Morro Bay Boulevard, you have people running the stop sign. So, you know, thinking about safety and just high visibility, you know, I was, I was just wanting to kind of size that up as we discuss this and wonder about, you know, other applications in the city.
Anecdotally, I would say that in the, more of the downtown core, you get many more pedestrians, based on my riding and walking around the downtown, than you do here. And that the high-vis crosswalk would be very applicable for Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street, or Morro Bay Boulevard and Harbor Street would be more high-volume pedestrian traffic, anecdotally. Need to do the counts to verify that, but I see many more pedestrians there than at Pacific and Main.
Okay. All right, great with that. Thanks, Rob. I'll just go ahead and open it up for public comment. And for those who'd like to speak to this item, Mr. Buckingham, public comment?
Not public comment, I would just say, as anybody might be coming forward, that Rob alluded to it quickly, but it may well be that as we work through downtown specific plan or downtown waterfront strategic plan, that this intersection and others are identified as sort of entry points into the downtown. And so, would be a good place for something like a bulbout to indicate that you're entering the downtown and perhaps putting in high-visibility crosswalks there as the boundary to the downtown.
Thanks. And with that, public comment is open for anybody who'd like to come and speak to this item. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back for discussion. And I'll look to my left for, no, I'll go ahead and look to the right. Sorry about that. How about, Noah, how about starting it off?
Yeah, I, in the previous visit of this, I did vote for the stop sign, mostly because of the strength of the citizen petition. And as I spent time at that intersection with nearby residents and just watching myself, I have noticed a lot more use there. And I think, I think it's important that we do something in response to a call to action. If you'll notice in the petition, there's quite a number of residents, as well as businesses, that have signed that and asked for some attention. So I'm really thankful that as we've worked through this, there is an alternative that would protect the city to a certain degree from some of the liability of an unwarranted stop sign. And I think this is probably a better option anyway. So I'm willing to not push for a stop sign, to rescind that and direct staff to install what I think could be something that would be useful in other areas of the city. And I'd like to see that done as soon as possible. I'd be a little concerned about the idea of spending too much time counting pedestrians there to get this installed. It has been probably about a year now since we received the petition. So I'd like to see that occur and then us keep utilizing that budget to look at the other intersections and keep being creative to help address these different situations.
John?
I would concur with what my compadre, Mr. Smuckler, has indicated. I live two blocks from there. Anecdotally, there are very few pedestrians, but folks that drive along that street drive fast. I would say 40 to 50 isn't unusual miles per hour. So therefore, my concern about reduction. I would want as much reduction as possible. I did not support a stop sign either. I don't think there's a need for that. But whatever you can do to calm or mitigate the issue with regard to speed, I think it imperative. And I also don't want to lose sight of what was mentioned about Morro Bay Boulevard. I have a business along Morro Bay Boulevard, and again, anecdotally, would comment that the California roll-through is routinely practiced on the stop sign in front of my business, and I imagine on many others along that area. So I don't want to lose sight of that. So I would also support the recommendation.
Christine?
Okay, I'm truly, honestly, this is philosophical, but I'm extremely disappointed not to have the latitude as a council and working with the community to add stop signs based on compelling citizen input. I think it's, I know, it's a disappointment for me, because I think that that's part of what a city is, is people coming forward and recognizing a need and saying, you know, this is what we believe makes our community safer. Now, are they engineers? Do they know about traffic warrants? No, they're not. They just happen to live here and live nearby. So for me, it's just a little bit of loss of local control over the things we can do in our community, even a small community like Morro Bay. So that being said, I'm not willing to take a risk. I don't think that's wise to put the city at any more risk than we are already in day-to-day with starting to do things that implement unwarranted traffic control devices that we've been warned by our insurance company are unwise. So it's an unwise decision, therefore, to push forward with a stop sign if we are getting expert advice on the risk management side that tells us we should not. So that said, it's just a little disappointing, because I feel like it's a little loss of the old-fashioned things you could do in your community, is, you know, we'd like to have a stop sign. And that's just disappointing. So nothing to be done about it, other than I just felt as though I needed to express it. I do, I do believe that, I think, one of your slides, Mr. Levick, mentioned that perception is reality. So if people perceive, many, many people, that there is an issue there with crossing, we've already given them the idea that we agree, because 3-2 vote, we said we'd give them a stop sign. So in order to meet that need, then I do agree with doing something there that, along with P WAB's recommendation, is a low-cost option to give the perception that things are now safer. But of course, I've learned, too, with many things like safe routes to school, that we can't predict and we can't protect people from, you know, by saying it's safe, just means it's, you know, you should still be aware when you're a pedestrian, know that you are really fighting back against cars that are going to win every time. So I'm cautious about telling people that now it's safer, because I know really it's just raising awareness for drivers and bikers and pedestrians. So it's awareness-raising, low-cost paint, sounds good to me. But I would like us to keep in mind that while we thought we had solved this problem with the stop sign, and we do have two other areas of the community, and thank you, Mr. Levick, for pointing them out, where people have been asking us for street calming devices in some way, too. So I would like to, if we're going to prioritize, maybe you could answer that a little bit, or what are your priorities? If we're doing low-cost options, we're using paint, and it's a painted bulbout, I'm wondering if, you know, the Public Works Advisory Board wouldn't want to advise us on other areas of the city that have been mentioned repeatedly and that we actually even talked about in our own, our goals and set aside some money at some point, mid-year budget review to take a look at, to see if that money would be there to work on some of these longstanding concerns, such as the San Jacinto Corridor, which is for many users, not just for the school, but certainly it's a high-intensity use during two times of the day. And then, you know, Easter Street, we've had the neighbors come forward from there, too. So just sort of, maybe we can talk a little bit about prioritizing and how we would go about doing it, just to keep in mind that there are others in line and likely other neighborhoods that perhaps we could identify, too, that could use some low-cost options to, you know, calm traffic. So, but for that's about it. I'd like to hear your response.
Let me comment on that first. There's, there's nothing in our municipal code or in state law that would prevent you from approving a stop sign at any location in the city. There are more and more claims regarding those stop signs that are being brought forward by our insurance provider. Prioritizing other traffic calming measures. The San Jacinto Corridor does receive a lot of pedestrians and cyclists going to back-and-forth to Delmar School, and then on the weekends, back-and-forth to the beach. I would think that's a priority to look at there. We have done a few things there, painting wider fogline areas, don't, we're not calling, we weren't calling them bike lanes, because we were hoping to get grant money, so we didn't want to solve the problem completely. No grant money, so maybe we need to look at a, another solution there. I think that would be another priority. Easter Street is an interesting issue there. We're getting a little off-topic, I think, Joe.
Just a little.
Maybe talking, talking a little bit about this, but I'm just going to mention one thing about Easter Street. It's the freeway mentality that comes off of Easter Street, and it's the first one or two blocks before people realize, oh, I'm in a neighborhood, and we need to come up with some sort of innovative solution about that. Not only that intersection, but perhaps looking at the other intersections that you directly come off the freeway on, and a way to alert folks that you are in a neighborhood now that is 25 miles an hour, not on a freeway where you're going 65-plus miles an hour.
Great. And I'll, good, I'll conclude with some of my remarks as well. From a perspective standpoint, I didn't support the stop sign with Mr. Heading as well. And interesting, as we talk about perspectives, I think that's the advantage of the board and the council. Christine, you know, mentioned, well, you know, do we lose control? We had, you know, as far as being able to install something like this, we had a lot of people come out to support it. I didn't necessarily support it, along with Mr. Heading. We both live in that same area. I didn't feel as though it was as warranted. But certainly, we had folks that came out. And I think it's an interesting comparison, because when we talk about San Jacinto, Council Member Johnson lives in that area and, you know, has a higher level of awareness of the situation there. So from that perspective, I didn't necessarily support the stop sign on many levels, but specifically staff recommendation on what the warrants were, et cetera. So I'm glad to have this come back to us. Appreciate the work. I would support the recommendations for painted bulbous. I've received a lot of feedback on the speed limit signs, what are they called, feedback signs?
Radar feedback.
Radar feedback signs. And, you know, I find, I find myself compelled when I'm going down Quintana, you know, it's flashing, you know, I'm slowing down, you know, and it almost becomes a game, okay, well, let me see if I can hit it just before I, you know, okay, I've slowed down, just, okay, I got it, you know. So, you know, there are some, you know, it provides feedback, and I think there is some positive, you know, to that. It's an additional expense, so I don't know if the, you know, the council would want to support that for this, but I would agree Marina would probably be the recommendation for that. But for this specifically, I would support the high-visibility crosswalk application. And any other further discussion from council on the feedback signs would be welcome. But with that, I'd like to, you know, conclude with the rest of remarks and make a motion proceed. John, any comments, or Noah?
Just to add that I, somewhere along the line, would like to see some kind of prioritization for calming in other areas. And I know our plate is full, and so I do realize that that may be a goal for next year, but I do, don't want to lose sight of it, so.
I'd just comment on that, that we do have an objective this year to install a certain number of traffic calming devices. I walked the San Jacinto Corridor on Friday afternoon. That's probably next on the list. And we, and we will bring you, week after next, where we, where we sort of are on that and where we're going, in terms of prioritization.
Great. Noah?
Yeah, I will make a motion, but I did just want to ask Mr. Levick, regarding the brick application, that, it was embossed, is that what you used to?
It's, yeah, they actually heat up the asphalt and melt a design in there, like a waffle iron kind of thing.
I, I could see maybe a situation, if this starts to work really well for us in the future, that we consider investing in that sort of technology ourselves. I'll leave that up to you to either go for that or at least consider that. So I'm not going to include that in my motion. I think I'll leave it more open-ended. And I'll just move that we, as a council, we rescind motion, resolution 38-15, and that we direct staff to install a high-visibility crosswalk and painted bulbous at the, at the intersection in question, and that staff continues to work towards other traffic calming measures as outlined in our goals and objectives.
Second.
And budgeted.
Second.
We have motion by Mr. Smuckler, second by Mr. Heading. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries 4-0.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask for clarification? There was a resolution on the adjutant.
Yes, that did all that.
They didn't just adopt it, or was that, adopting that resolution?
We rescinded the resolution for clarification.
There was a new resolution that actually rescinds the old resolution.
Thank you.
So you could adopt.
Resolution number 6715?
6715.
So I'd make.
Does all that.
Okay.
And then we would take the specific direction that is not in the resolution for the installation of the traffic calming measures.
Okay. Noah?
I would make a follow-up motion adopting 6715.
I'll make a second motion then, that's paired with the first motion, to adopt resolution 6715 to complete the action.
And I'll make a second.
Second. We have motion by Mr. Smuckler, second by Mr. Heading, and that would be approving, adopting resolution number 6715. adopting resolution number sixty-seven fifteen. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries four, zero. Thanks for your help on that. I think that would have, yep, appreciate that. And then, now we can move on to, move on to item C2. Item C2, as I fumble through my paperwork, pardon me. So item, item C2 is adoption of ordinance number five ninety-seven, amending subsection five point oh eight point two-two-zero C of the Morbid Municipal Code relating to the $4,000 exception. And this is the Administrative Services Director, Susan Slaton. Thank you.
Good evening. And my PowerPoint will be in, there it is. All right. So this is the adoption of Business Tax Ordinance five nine seven, correcting the Business Tax Ordinance that had been voted into place, number five nine five. There we go. So just a little background, ordinance five nine five was adopted on September eighth, two thousand and fifteen, and very quickly thereafter, our business tax staff noticed that there was a problem, and there was just a little wording error, and the little wording error just said that people, not everybody was going to have access to the $4,000 grocery receipts exemption. So we immediately talked to the city attorney, and he drafted up ordinance five ninety-seven, which was introduced at the October thirteenth council meeting. Again, ordinance five nine seven removes the restricting language in section five point oh eight point two-two oh C. And with this change, all business types, everyone will have access to the $4,000 grocery receipts exemption to business tax requirement. So my recommendation is to the city council, I'm asking you to review and provide comments on ordinance five ninety-seven. Open it for public comment, for testimony for and against the ordinance, and then make a motion to adopt ordinance five nine seven. Again, this is the legally required second reading for non-urgency ordinances. After the second reading, by title only, with further reading waived, it is recommended the council adopt the ordinance, which will then become effective on the thirty-first day after its adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go for questions. So just to be clear, we're going to adopt, the motion be to adopt this by title only at this point?
And read the title.
Read the title, which is in the subject matter. Okay, got it. Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, open it up for public comment. Anybody that'd like to speak to this item? I'd close public comment, bring it back. I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance number five nine seven, amending subsection five point oh eight point two-two-zero C of Morbid Municipal Code relating to the $4,000 exception. Motion by Mayor Irons, second by, and waive all further readings. So let me repeat my motion. Adopt the, adoption of ordinance number five nine seven, amending subsection five point oh eight point two-two-zero C of Morbid Municipal Code relating to, relating, relating to the $4,000 exception, and waive further readings. And we have a second by Christine, so motion by Mayor Irons, a second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion? None, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries four, zero. Thank you. And now we'll move on to item C3. Item C3 is discussion of direction of the expiring lease at lease site sixty-two dash sixty-two W. This is Kruger Kayak Horizons located at five-five-one in Barcadaro, and we're looking for Mr. Eric Enderby.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Irons and council. I will say, this is my first PowerPoint presentation to the city council. I'm kind of old-school that way, but I'm learning. I did it today on my flip phone, so I hope you like it.
Thanks, Eric. Congratulations.
Okay, so the purpose tonight is to, for the council, obtain, obtain city council direction on this expiring lease site sixty-two sixty-two W, otherwise known as kayak horizons. Couple photos there of it, from front, front and back. Small retail shop down below, and even smaller retail shop above, you can see on the picture on the left, and even smaller yet storage shack over on the left side of that left picture, which is in the southwest corner of the lease site, a small dock out front and on the waterside, and then a couple of off-street parking spaces. So one of our smallest, if not the smallest lease site we have on the waterfront. My recommendation, as currently written, your staff report recommends the council adopt alternative A, which specifically is that we authorize staff to issue requests for proposals for the redevelopment of the site and operation of it into the future, which, as we go through the discussion, they start to make more sense. In recent days, since the agenda was posted, a fourth alternative has come to light, is a possible one for the city council to consider, which will be outlined, alternative D is outlined below. I will issue, I guess if I have to do an ex parte, but I have conversed with Councilmember Johnson on this and thought, based on her response, that this would be a good alternative to propose, maybe another way of looking at this lease site. So now, what I'm recommending, or at least for the council to continue possibly exploring here, is alternative D, which is what I'd call my preferred alternative, specifically for the council to retain control of this lease site after the lease's expiration. It's a good site to build a much-needed public restroom in this area in addition to continuing on with a small kayak or other concession-type operation, and operate it more as a building lease rather than a ground lease. So the alternatives I have, I guess I need to click here again, don't I? Okay, alternatives as proposed in the staff report, alternative A, issue request for proposals, an RFP for this site now. Alternative B, direct staff to issue an RFP at a later date, or alternative C, wait until such a time that the current leaseholder might identify a suitable purchaser of this site, and consider what that potential new purchaser may propose for redevelopment. And again, but in recent days, we've kind of come up with this alternative D, which is the city assuming this lease site is a site for building a restroom and harbor walk and the other improvements that we're hoping for. From a fiscal impact standpoint, again, this is one of our smallest lease sites on the waterfront. Current minimum rent on this site is approximately $12,000 per year. In any redevelopment, there's really not any room for much improvement to build much more unless you really went lot line to lot line and maximized out the space usage. I don't know that that would be council's direction. In past council considerations, I think a lot of the gist of the council's direction on it was keep it small, it's a corner site, keep the views open, so, you know, really maximizing out buildings on this lease site probably wouldn't be the best interest to the city. But in any new lease, this is, lease is on a, currently on a modern lease format, but again, due to its small size, it's really not a large revenue generator. So if, if we were to go with alternative D, or something along those lines, we would still expect a fair amount of revenue from this site, certainly not a large impact either direction I wouldn't anticipate. Background, existing leases has a twenty-three-year term, expires September two thousand and eighteen. Tonight will actually not be the third time, but it's actually the fourth time the city council has considered the direction which to take this lease. Back in June of two thousand and thirteen, we considered it, and we, council's direction was to postpone it until we can consider the Gray's Inn lease site next door, because that was coming up on expiration as well. July two thousand and thirteen, we did bring that back to council, and the council accepted the current leaseholder's proposal, Dennis Kruger, which was for a pretty modest redevelopment of the site, and it directed us to work with him and bring back something in the future. That proposal was subsequently withdrawn, I think about the end of maybe two thousand and fourteen, and the council's most recent action from January two thousand and fifteen was to allow the current leaseholder to work with their next-door neighbor, Gray's Inn, on a possible assignment assumption and the Gray's Inn folks' preliminary site redevelopment plan. That plan was satisfactory to council, and I think he directed us to work with them and see that assignment assumption through, and then start working out greater details on what the proposal was. Unfortunately, in the intervening months, those parties have failed to come to mutually agreeable terms. It looks like that assignment and assumption won't happen, which is why we're back here again tonight. Current leaseholders indicated and not intend to submit a proposal to redevelop this site and operate it into the future. It looks like they just want to operate it out to the end of two thousand and eighteen, September two thousand and eighteen, when it expires. And again, the city's options, as outlined in alternatives, are to send it out for RFP, or wait until the current leaseholder identifies a suitable new possible purchaser, or again, consider the site as a place to maybe build that public restroom that we really need down at the other end of the waterfront. Attachments included on the staff report of the January thirteenth council staff report and minutes on this item, and then, which included the previous council staff reports and minutes, that give a lot of the history on how we got to this point. In conclusion, again, the city's at a possible new crossroads with how it wants to look at this lease site, commonly known as kayak horizons. Sale or redevelopment by the current leaseholder appears to no longer be a possibility, at least no longer be an option for what that leaseholder wants to do. A little less than three years left on this current lease, and we believe that a truly independent city-managed public restroom in the southern part of the Barcadaro may be a good amenity we want to look at. Current system of leaseholder-provided public restrooms, as you know, there's one in, oh, we've got one in the Astero Inn, in the Salt Building, in the new Mirror Image Smoochage, in the Standard Powell Shop next door. But that, while those restrooms, I think, I consider them kind of a Band-Aid solution, and they are an admirable solution, admirable solution to pursue over the past, you know, ten or so years. They're not really fully fulfill the needs of true public restrooms. They're difficult for our leaseholders to maintain because they're inside their buildings. Like any public restroom, they're subject to a fair amount of vandalism, and it's, doesn't work as well, I don't think, as intended. Like I said, I think it's really, truly a Band-Aid. We believe this is really kind of a once-in-a-decades-long opportunity for the city to acquire this site and look at building a restroom down that area, because we really don't have anything unless we go further south towards Tidylands, and then we start to get close to the Tidylands restroom. So now we're recommending the city council authorize us, staff, to do some preliminary investigations into this alternative, and bring back for, to a future council meeting. What we'd be looking at is kind of doing some basic layout and size considerations on what such a proposal might look like, maybe do some rough, rough cost estimations, and then possibly look to the recreation folks for some of the bond measures that may be out there, bond grant funding that may be available for public improvement-type infrastructure like this, and bring that back again to a future meeting of council. I'm happy to answer any questions and provide any other information.
Mayor Irons, if I can just follow on one, one thing, so sort of late-breaking idea here, great idea to think about. Staff has not done much of the due diligence that we would want to do in thinking this through, so I might actually encourage you to do a, sort of a hybrid here, and, and have us go out for RFP worldwide, see what the great ideas are. We might include a public restroom component in that RFP, but also look at retaining it as a city, as a city facility. So we can do both of those. Essentially, the city can be working an RFP for you on keeping it while we go out for an RFP, and then we can choose the best option. And it, you'll be here in a couple of weeks. The, the aquarium site is, is looking, we're going to bring you the concept that you asked for in, in December, and it will almost certainly include a public restroom component, and that's a block north of here. So a couple of things going on, and what we, what you might want to consider doing is sort of say, do-all. And that is, that's do a, a large RFP to see what we can get from the private sector for this site, and at the same time, look at public sector solution, and then we'll come back to you with all those.
Great. And with that, we can get into questions, open it up for public comment and back for discussion. So you wanted to open up for questions? Councilmember Johnson?
Sure. I mean, I can't talk about restrooms enough, I guess, because I thought that was really intriguing when, so we don't have enough potty talk as it is. But the point is, I did ask, I did ask Mr. Enderby, you know, what, what else have we heard? First of all, my question, and I'll ask them for us all to hear. So because we had spent some time on this lease site, and we knew that there were opportunities for collaboration between the two leaseholders next door, just could you confirm with me, Eric, that that's just not going to happen? So we'll have to move on from that.
Affirmative. Both parties have informed us that they couldn't get anywhere, and it looked like they weren't going to come to, to terms, so they basically abandoned that process.
Okay. So then we're, you know, back to where we were a little bit with certainly the lease site that we're looking at tonight. So then the second question is, sometimes people walk around and they talk to people and they say, oh, you know, if the lease site pops up, let me know. Have you had any kind of interest from that in any way without being specific about, you know, an opportunity?
The current leaseholder did enter into some negotiations with another party about, before the Gray's Inn folks, about a possible purchase of that site. That too didn't come to fruition. I did have previous to that, in the months previous to that, when we were considering that, and Gray's Inn, I had several leaseholders that had just come and inquired and asked about, you know, where the process is and how it works. They were interested in it. Obviously, they didn't, other than the one party I just spoke about, nobody approached the leaseholder there and got into any serious conversation, so they must have concluded that it wasn't worth it for them.
Okay. So then that's how we got to the conversation about, well, you know, any other use for that, and then that's kind of where the restroom popped up. So those were my questions, and I think that's really all I had, and then I'll just save my comments on restrooms for discussion. Thanks.
Thanks. John?
No questions.
Okay. With that, we'll open up for public comment. For anybody that'd like to speak to this item, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council. Good evening, staff. Todd Bastin, leaseholder next door, five-six-one in Barcadaro. We tried to move the ball forward with the leaseholder next door at five-five-one, Dennis. We invested significant time, significant money. We had professional plans drawn up, we had legal fees incurred for purchase agreements, and it turned out that Dennis really wanted to run the place under his own steed until the very end. So he's the one who pulled the plug technically on the leaseholder transfer. Just here to let you know that we have continued interest in the project. We have the ability and the uniqueness to develop really both properties together at the same time, if the RFP goes our way. We can retain, retain the historical integrity of the building. Two little hotel rooms would fit in there perfectly and complement the building and our business style next door. Increasing hotel rooms would increase TOT and T-Bid and TMD, and we could turn that property into a revenue generator, I think. The plans that we worked on included enlarging the, the water dock, so we still retain the, the water sport activity there. So people who have been coming down there to that corner for decades will still be able to rent a kayak, and they'll say, oh, ooh, new hotel rooms. This also included a kayak horizons bathroom for their staff and for their customers. So that was part of our plans. Anyway, just want to let you know we're still here, and we're still interested, and even though it didn't go our way with Dennis, we're still involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment on this? Seeing none, all closed public comment. Are there any questions beyond staff? Okay. All closed public comment, bring it back to council. Noah?
Yes, thank you. Well, I'm intrigued all the way around. I think this is a special site, and small can be beautiful, and I think it is here. So I'm interested in going with the recommendation that we keep our options open, and be prepared to look at the, hopefully some responses, and that the Bastins will follow through with, with a submittal, and we can consider the future of this unique site for, for our town.
Great. Thanks. John?
Thank you. I would absolutely agree with that, and I believe we are setting a precedent for other leases that might be coming up to go out for RFP. I think it's part of our fiduciary responsibility to look. Some criteria, since you asked, that I had thought of. One, something that might produce the greatest return on investment. Two, something that would improve the view shed of the area. Three, something that could improve significantly the facade. Four, something that would add to overall tourism improvement and draw. And five, something that would have no or minimal impact on the environment. And six, something that could enhance the safety of the area in terms of criteria, just to be included as part of your RFP. So I would support going out for RFP. I would be very interested in Mr. Bastin's proposal. Thank you for coming forward and making mention of that. We really appreciate that, and look forward to hearing from you in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Christine?
No, I agree with staff recommendation and the things that have been mentioned by the council so far, so look forward to going out for RFP then, as per staff recommendation. I don't have anything else to add, except I would say that bathrooms sometimes are not well-signed, and I do feel that we probably need to discuss that as moving forward. I'm glad to hear that, you know, even though the restrooms are in there and they are embedded in the lease sites, I just, because they are a burden, I do not doubt that. And I have heard that specifically from the smaller retail folks, that they've got a restroom that they're responsible for, like at the newer lease sites, they are responsible for those, and they are a burden, they just simply are, because they're not tied to a restaurant that has cleaning staff likely anyhow. But when you attach it to, when you've got a retail situation, it's a little bit different. So I respect that and understand that, but I think that these are public spaces, you know, we are responsible to, for public access there, and if there was work to be done, perhaps it is on our end to come up with standardized signage to provide ourselves, or, you know, somehow encourage leaseholders to. signage to provide ourselves or, you know, somehow encourage leaseholders to make those signs extremely visible, because I just don't believe they are right now. That's from my own experience. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And I would support the council's comments and I would agree with the recommendation to go out to RFP and keep our options open as we do so. I'll just leave it at that and I'll take a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we direct staff to conduct a request for proposal process for the site as soon as feasible. That's alternative A. And that we concurrently do a little more analysis to consider alternative D and return with information on both options at the appropriate time for decision.
Great. Any seconds?
Second.
So we have a motion by Noah, a second by Christine. And any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
Further discussion?
Further discussion?
Sorry. I'm trying to speak. Would you consider adding the criteria that I outlined in your motion? I guess this is my question.
Sure. Without opening up discussion on the other criteria that would be part of the RFP, but those work for me. I would like to see actually, instead of a do no harm to the environment, I think there's potential to actually help restore and enhance the environment. So, you know, something along those lines, but I think that list was good. Not sure if Mr. Endersby wanted to comment on that, but.
No, I think my intention would be we'll package this all back together and when we bring the RFP back with including all these alternatives, we can, I guess, for lack of a better word, kind of a smorgasbord of list of things we can possibly include on there and then we can craft those at the time or what council wants to include or not.
Okay.
Does that work for you? Looks like we'll see the RFP.
Well, yeah, I guess that's fine as long as you captured what I said, I'm hoping.
Yeah, we'll capture what you said.
If it's captured, I know it is, so.
Bring other things that come to light as we craft the RFP and have those in there.
Okay. Okay, great. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you short on that. We went through the motion and 4-0 on that, so we're good with that.
I'm not sure we voted.
You voted, but you want to amend it to include the criteria.
Okay, so you did make an amendment formally, okay? And I think it's appropriate, we can go ahead. If you want to make an amendment. Okay. So all in favor say aye. Opposed? None, motion carries. Wow, thanks for that. And with that, let's take a short break and we'll be right back. Thanks.